Hey, Capaz de Callejico, welcome back to the podcast. Like always, I want to thank my friends here at Callejico Brewing Company for allowing me to record today's episode here. I really appreciate it. Today, we have a returning guest. Back when we first were just talking before we went live. The first time we we kind of met quote unquote was through Zoom.
That's right.
It was in the the height of the pandemic. We were talking about being, I guess, candidates for the trial for the AstraZeneca.
Vaccine trial, yeah.
And my guest today is Tomas Oliva, who is the current Central City Mayor, and now he's a candidate for reelection for a city council.
Good to be here.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, no, thanks for inviting me. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming down to Callejico.
Yes.
I think I think our slogan should be, because I hear it a lot, it should be the city with potential.
City with potential, never a dull moment.
That's a good one. That's a good one. So Tomas, tell my listeners a little bit about yourself.
Yes, so I'm from El Centro, raised, born in LA, but raised here in El Centro, a product of the community. And I left to go to school, graduated from UC San Diego undergrad, public law degree, and founding father for a Latino fraternity out there, Gamma Zeta Alpha. And after that, I was, I had an opportunity to work in Sacramento at the Capitol, learn about politics. I am convinced that there's politics in everything, everything. The difference is whether we care to pay attention to it or not. And my experience in Sacramento helped me understand that people in power, people in certain positions get to decide who wins, who loses, right? Who gets what and who doesn't get what? And I never knew it at the time, but I I just thought I was going to be the guy that works in the background, you know? The the one that preps the speech, the one that, you know, makes sure the tables are where they're supposed to be. I never thought I'd actually run for office, but when I came back home, I didn't feel comfortable just sitting in the audience. I'm sitting in the audience and I'm looking at who our leaders are and I'm thinking, why aren't you doing this? Why aren't you doing that? And why does it have to be like that? And the only reason why you would think that is if you're not allowing yourself to think in a different way, right? And a more modern or just taking into consideration a whole section of our community that that you're not wrapping your head around, right? So finally decided to to run, but after grad school, right? And I lost twice. Most people don't remember that, but I do know what it's like to lose and it's not a good feeling. But I did lose twice and then finally won in 2018.
When, how old were you when you ran the first time?
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight. And, you know, El Centro is different. And I think every community in Imperial County is different. And I think that El Centro has a traditional mindset where our leaders are mainly older. And I think Edgar Garcia was one of the very first ones when he ran and won. I think he was maybe thirty years old, thirty two maybe. But he was in his early, early thirties, and I think that, you know, he kind of broke the mold a little bit. And then I came, came around and I got elected when I was, I think, thirty four. And so, you know, we're starting to reflect a little bit more what our community looks like. And so there is a, there's a spread in our council. And so, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a, yeah, I think even Callejico has a little bit of a mix when it comes to age.
Sure, yeah.
Range. And it's like, I think Gil was mentioning that there's a, you know, there's kind of a change coming. And we'll see it here in Callejico. There's two really young candidates. El Centro has four candidates. You, I think you being the youngest or Danielle Flores, I don't.
Yeah, she's, I believe she's the youngest. I've never met her. All I know is that she is a lot, lot younger than me, which is cool, right? I tell people all the time, you know, I, I, I never want to come off as I'm being dismissive because of age, because I was there, right? I remember when I ran and I was twenty eight and the powers that be looked at me like, get out of here, right? Like, they didn't take me seriously. And so I certainly don't want to do that. I just, in all honesty, I don't know who that person is. I've never met that person, so I can't say anything.
Yeah. And I mean, being, being somebody that's been involved in politics, you know, since you were twenty eight, Gil was somebody also that was, has been involved really young.
Right.
What is something that, you know, going back to when you were twenty eight to you now? What is something that you would tell your twenty eight self, like candidate?
Yeah, my twenty eight self, I would probably say to myself, you think you're ready, but you're not there yet. And although I think my capacity, my intelligence, my everything, I think my twenty eight self still hadn't gone through some things that I would go through later in life that would allow me to be a little bit more compassionate. And so I hadn't hit that point yet. And so I think that the reason why I look back at twenty eight and in retrospect, I perhaps was not as ready as I thought I was, was just because I still needed to pick up a few little tools. Me personally, right? This doesn't necessarily apply to others that are twenty eight or younger, but I, I think I'm more compassionate now per some experiences, and I think that's important in the offices that we're, you know, running for.
Yeah, because, I mean, every, every city is so diverse. They have different populations. And yeah, I think it's really important that, that you look at the big picture, you know, you're serving not only people in, in your neighborhood, but people in other neighborhoods that, you know, some of the decisions that, that you make might impact them greatly. Might be a bigger impact to them than it is to you. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that, because I serve in a commission here in Callejico and, and I've kind of, you know, been learning of, you know, being, being able to see the big picture.
Sure.
That's a, I think that's something that I kind of see in a lot of young candidates that it's really hard for them to, they focus on something and they, they're really passionate about it. But I, I feel that when you're a city council member, you're, you're representing the whole city, not only your agendas or your goals.
Well, you know, the other thing that I would add to that is, I do believe it and allow me to unpack it a little bit. And that is, I do remember once upon a time when I was younger, and I just mentioned this to a friend of mine recently, that I remember nitpicking and being very critical about every little thing when I was younger. And it could be that perhaps I just had that kind of energy and I was just willing to be a pellonero when I was younger. Like if I read a paragraph and one word was wrong, uh-uh, that word, right? You got to change that word because I'm not happy. And I think some of my college friends would probably hear this and say, yep, that was him, right? But now, being a little bit older, I, I realize that the battle is not in that moment right there. It's how that moment is going to affect tomorrow and the next day and the next day. I've learned a lot from my mentors, like Congressman Juan Vargas and others, which is, you know, it's, it's not about being the first to say something. It's about being correct when you say it. It's not about being the first one to wag your finger at somebody or to call someone out. It's about asking that person how we fix it first. And so it's not about being sensational and having other people see me as being the, ah, you're the leader. Leader is getting stuff done. And so, for example, we have, we have had to correct certain governmental departments or certain agencies and this and that. And you would never really see us blasting them on social media or in the news or anything like that, because at the end of the day, today it's that. But tomorrow I might need them. I might need them to help this family. But if I'm constantly burning my bridges with that department in order to gain some limelight, limelight or some political points, when I need them to come through, what incentive do they have to come through? And how effective am I going to be in these positions to help out the families, which at the end of the day, that's what we're here for, right? It's about them. It's not about me. So I, I try to make sure that I maintain my effectiveness while I'm doing my job.
Yeah, yeah. And it's something that, you know, going back to Callejico, I think we kind of strive on that. Whereas like you, you mentioned that never a dull moment and it's true, like we, we like to sensationalize, you know, those, the little moments that could be like passive, like, oh, you can, it could have passed and nobody would have probably paid attention to it. But then, you know, we jump on it and, and we make this, this big deal about it.
Well, you know, I will say, as I was driving from El Centro here, I thought to myself, I wonder if he's going to ask me what my opinion is of certain things. And I just thought to myself, I, I personally don't like it when someone from a different city criticizes my city, so I'm not going to do that. So I told myself, I, because I don't like it, I'm going to do unto others as I would want done unto me. So I will just keep your comment to how you said it. I'm not going to add to it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that, that being from Callejico, I should.
Sure. I mean, hey, you're free to do that.
And, and it's, you know, there's, there's an election here as well. So, and, and nobody from Callejico has contacted me to be on the podcast. So, you know, you're free to, to be on it, but just hit me up. Going back to, to your candidacy and, and your experience in city council in El Centro, this is your first full term?
My first full term, yes.
What are some of the things that, you know, you, what, it's one of the main reasons why you want to run for reelection? You know, a lot of people, you know, they, they run one time, they win.
Yeah.
And maybe they didn't like it and they don't run again. What's, what's one of the biggest reasons you're coming back to?
So I, there was a time in my term where I almost thought that I wasn't going to do it anymore, that I was just going to finish the term, cumplir con mi deber, and, and then just kind of go away. And the reason for that is because I felt very ineffective the first half of my term. The first half of my term, quite honestly, I felt like I was being put in the kiddy table, right? All my other colleagues ran the show and they pretty much just kind of paid attention to their own opinions and they would ask themselves. I was just kind of an afterthought, right? I was over, over there. I'm just going off of my feelings, you know, nothing, no concrete evidence or examples, but that's just how I felt. And in the election of 2020, the community decided to elect new members. And I want to say the tide turned for me, because at that point, I feel as though my opinions were taken into consideration, my thoughts, my, you know, my ideas of projects now meant something and were valued. And so now I, I feel empowered and I feel seen, heard, everything validated in terms of all of the experience that I have and all of the knowledge and education, the preparation to fully understand politics to the extent that I do and, and put it to good use for El Centro. And so now I feel that this level of effectiveness is prime and which is why I would like another term. And quite honestly, I think that with the pandemic, our focus and all of these ideas and, and the projects and the movements that people sent me to city council to accomplish, we didn't get to. Because we all had to shift and we all had to pivot to focus on the pandemic and to protect life and, and to make sure that we were being mindful of those things. And so I still want to go back and revisit all of those projects and all of those movements that, that, the, the citizenry, right? The residents and the constituency wants us to focus on it. So that's why I wanted a chance to be able to now focus on those things.
Yeah, you mentioned education. Do you think that education and experience play a, a role in, in being an effective city council member?
I do, but it's not a hundred percent. Like I've known folks who, you know, maybe didn't get a graduate degree, maybe didn't get a college degree, but they have so much experience that they could probably run circles around somebody fresh out of college, right? So there's, there's a balance there. I think that if you have education, you are understanding things in theory. That by itself, you know, you're missing a lot. If you have just experience, you're probably in better footing, but education would put you further, right? So I, I want to say that there's a healthy balance there, not too much on one side, not too much in another. But certainly experience is, is necessary, because otherwise then it's just like you understand things in a book, okay? And I will tell you through my experience, right? I, I remember studying a lot of these concepts in, in theory. And then as I'm living through all this stuff, I, I always revert back to the textbook, like, oh, I remember reading about that. Or, oh, I remember studying that. This is, this is a real life example, right? Like, this is it. I'm living it right now, right? So it does go hand in hand, I think.
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, we have a lot of people here that they're young, they're educated. But we kind of, you know, throw that inexperienced card at them, like, you know, you don't have any experience. But I feel, I feel that a lot of the experience where that, that that I feel is kind of important is, you know, life, living, you know, living in, in, in a city where you have to pay your water bill, you have to pay your mortgage, you take your kids to school, you notice the traffic, you notice, you know, your streets that aren't. So like, I feel that that kind of experience does come a long way when it comes to leading and making decisions for, for a city that you're representing.
No, absolutely, because those, those experience gives you context, right? Like if, if you're so quick to put a ballot measure to raise people's taxes on, on a, then, you know, you, you might rethink it if you're the one paying your property taxes. If you're the one paying your bills, you start thinking about it twice. I mean, I want to say my property tax bill has gone up and down like so many times. I, I'm not quick to put that kind of stuff on, on a ballot measure, because I know what it's like for a shift of like $200, right? Every month can, can really throw off my monthly budget. So certainly those things. Because it keeps you part of what your constituency is. And if you're paying your bills and you're going through that experience, you understand it. And experience, like you mentioned, it's not just work experience, there's life experience, and then there's the literal sense of, are you walking through your community? Why is that important? Because you'll be able to realize, do we need to make better improvements on, on sidewalks, on streets? And you won't know that if you're not walking through it, if you're not going around, you know? Do, is there a need for business development? Is there a need for transportation? Is there a need for all these investments? And you won't know unless you're experiencing in, in different forms, not just what you're used to, but more than what you're used to.
Yeah, for sure. This is your first run at mayorship.
Oh, yeah.
What's your, what has been your experience so far?
It's, I'm happy that I got to be mayor when life is kind of coming back to normal, when, you know, people are vaccinated, we're coming back, right? Everything's opening up. We're having our first traditional school year, right? All that kind of stuff. And I, I thought it was going to be different. I will say that there's some slight changes that I would make. I didn't expect to be as busy as I am now. Again, you think about it in theory, you're the mayor, people are going to call you, people are going to want to meet with you, yada, yada. But it's not until you're actually in it, do you realize just how impactful that is, right? Just how less time that is. And so I, I really do think that there's, there's a lot of things that happened this year that I, I wish would have been different or would have been more of, right? But that's life. And so far, I think, I think I've done a good job. I hope people agree with me. And that's why I'm asking for another chance to serve.
Yeah, for sure. And I think that, you know, we always look to El Centro as kind of like, you're the city with, you know, I'm, I'm assuming the biggest population.
That's correct.
You know, you have a lot of places where people go like shopping, like
Sure.
the mall and all these things. You know, we see the city as something to strive for. How do you, I don't know, it's, it's kind of weird, because I mentioned Callejico, you know, we have, everybody says, oh, it has a potential.
Sure.
You know, the city that people come through to, from Hicari to go shop or whatnot. But you know, what, how do you, what's the word you want to say? But it's, it's, I guess we, Callejico envies El Centro a lot, a lot of the citizens here, because you have like the pavilion and you have all these other things.
Right.
I, I, I was at the game last night, you know, the community is so involved in, in the football games. How, how is it that El Centro, which is a couple of miles away from Callejico, has this driving community of people involved in events? You know, you guys have a lot of events at, at Buckland Park where you have is it because you have, you guys have more, a bigger budget or how do you guys are able to, to, you know, have that sense of community or?
You know, I, I really do think at the base of everything, it starts with our leadership, right? I felt that when I got elected and I came onto this new board, there was this unwritten rule or this sense of understanding of cordiality amongst council members. And that we needed to respect each other because we're, we're there for the same purpose and we might have different ideas, but always respect. Now granted, we don't always agree and, but there's just no need to be disrespectful. And, and there's a reason why I'm honing in on, it starts with council. Because I didn't really see this play out until my term, which is if you have a healthy council, if you have a council that's at least cordial and respectful to each other, it trickles to so many things. So you talk about budgets, right? The largest contributor to a city's budget is the general fund, right? And it's, it's, I mean, sorry, the, the largest contributor to the general fund of the city is sales tax. Sales tax comes from retail, comes from commercial. What, if, if a business is going to look at where they want to go, they're going to want to go where there has been good investment, good return, housing and whatnot, right? So a business is going to want to start there. And when you talk about not just small business, but big capital, right? Big, large, big box stores. We are very lucky in El Centro to have Measure P, which is a half cent sales tax increase. I think, going back again to the way council operates, I think a resident is more inclined to approve a sales tax increase or some sort of tax increment if they know that they could trust their council, because if they could trust their council, they'll feel as though the council is going to spend the money in the right way, right? Also, when we do developments like fields, you know, the new library that we have, perhaps the upcoming, you know, the aquatic center, the upcoming police station, that's all monies that are going to be bonded, right? So we have to go and bond and our Measure P, right? All of these underwriters that would grade us as to what interest rate and all that kind of stuff, they look at how dysfunctional is the council? How like they, from what I've been told, a lot of these underwriters will go online and they'll look at newspaper articles to see how scandalous or how, you know, how many times does the city council come up and whether it's a positive or a negative? And if it's a negative, our rating goes down, would go down. And what, if, if our rating goes down, that means that's more interest rate for the residents to have to pay it off. So again, there, there are consequences to how you behave on council and how you're treating others. And then also, you know, you want three votes to do something. And if you're constantly fighting. So one of the things that I've learned is that it's important to treat each other with respect, because I may not need you today, but I might need you tomorrow. And that, and that goes back to my earlier story about some governmental departments where they might have fumbled. And it's about saying, we need to correct that. And, and it's not about, look, everyone, look, look at what they did and I'm the one that found out. And look, look, because again, I may not need them today, but I might need them tomorrow. And that's, I think, the role of the game.
Yeah. And, and I think that whenever people say, oh, I'm not a politician or I'm not going to play politics. I think right away, you know, I kind of shut it off, because in order to be a good city council member, you need to play politics, because like you said, like you're going to need, sooner or later, you're going to need like somebody else's vote or somebody else's support. So, and that, and in a sense, it's playing politics.
And if I may, when, when somebody says play politics, that doesn't mean, and that doesn't equal playing dirty. That's, that's not, that's not synonymous, right? Like it's, politics is in a very basic way, choosing winners and losers, like who, who gets and who doesn't get, right? And so it's not just about being unfair or being argumentative or clashing and stuff like that. But it is navigating through in order to accomplish something, right? And if you see that certain portions of your community have gained for so long and others have not, then your job is to slowly start navigating so that those that have not gotten the resources, that have not been paid attention to, begin to get made, you know, attention, given attention and given resources and investment. So that there's equity and that there's fairness, right? And so that everyone gets a shot at something.
Yeah. Hey, guys, sorry for the interruption, but I want to take this time and thank my sponsors. I want to thank my friends Camilo, Jake, Eric Ortega. I want to thank Eddie Lopez from Roots Creative, Ms. Norma Sierra Galindo, IID Director, representing Division Five and serving the entire Imperial Valley. Will Torres from Valley Sports Network, your Imperial Valley source for sports. I want to thank Sergio's Tacos and Hot Dogs. With eight years of experience serving the Imperial, San Diego Yama Counties with Mexican-style hot dogs and taquitas. Contact Sergio at seven six zero five six two zero zero fifty seven, or look for Sergio's Tacos and Hot Dogs on Facebook. I want to thank Eric Reyes from Los Amigos de la Comunidad, empowering communities together. Finally, I want to thank David Gasalem. If you're thinking of buying or selling a home in Imperial or San Diego Counties, make sure you contact David. He's not only a Realtor, but an investor with over twenty years of experience. And he'll teach you along the way in one of the most important investments of your life. Contact David at seven six zero two three five nine five seven six, or look for David Gasalem on Facebook. All right, guys, we're now back to the show. I think every city here in the valley, you know, their downtown is, you know, kind of like, not an eyesore, but like it's slowly dying. What, what is, how important is it for you to, to make sure that, you know, that area in El Centro, downtown El Centro is something that people kind of strive to go to or kind of visit more, a little bit more?
Very important. And, and I say that because in, in all the times that I've run for office and for myself, for others, I think improving El Centro's downtown has been one of the top three or four things that people focus. And I think downtown is nostalgic for everyone. We all have memories of downtown, walking down when we were kids or when we were teenagers, seeing our big brothers and sisters go to the Owl, right? Menudos on Sundays, that kind of thing. And so we have very positive memories with downtown. And I think that at the end of the day, folks just want that back again, to, to have positive memories again for their kids, right? In downtown. And I think that maybe this is, what I'm about to say is applicable to every other city, but it's just the economy is changing. And I think that businesses and how businesses exist is changing. And so we have to reimagine and redefine what our downtown is and how it serves the economy. Because what once was is not, is not going to exist the same way again, right? You used to have one building, one business, but now you're seeing one building, maybe three businesses within, right? Shared space and shared everything. There are people who prefer to buy stuff online, right? And so maybe not so much a storefront, but a distribution center, where like if you order something and they have it there for you, plus there's other things there. There's so many different ways that businesses can exist now. And I think we just need to kind of meet the modern version of what our downtown could be. Once upon a time, they didn't allow breweries, they didn't allow mixed use. I'd like to see where, you know, you have retail on the first floor and then maybe some housing on the second and third floors, right? Because we always talk about like, oh, why can't it be like San Diego? Why can't it be LA? And guess what? They have that there. They have mixed use development, right? And so why couldn't we have it and make it walkable, make it to where these businesses that want to exist, they don't have to worry about customers, because guess what? Their customer is just right upstairs, or it's next door. And, and that person's going to walk across versus getting in their car and driving a couple of miles away for something, they could just get it right there. So it's about convenience too.
Yeah, I think a lot of, like even Callejico has thought of, you know, the mixed use, you know, down, in the downtown area. And, and I feel it's a great idea, because like you said, you know, if, if I need a pair of socks and there's a store downtown, downstairs that I could go get them, instead of ordering online and getting them three days later, I would just rather
Correct.
pay a little bit more and, and get them right away, you know? And, and that's a, you know, something that, you know, like I said, like everybody, every's down, everybody downtown is kind of like a
It's got its own onda. Yeah, every, everyone's downtown has his own onda. I know for us, I think there's a lot of empty buildings. There's a lot of absent owners. And we need to figure out how we force them to maintain their building. But very arguably, I think that, you know, until somebody comes in with money to buy the building from someone and says, I want to fix it up because I see potential, it could be, it could be difficult as far as like, you know, government isn't always the answer. And in this case, we don't have the tools to be buying up a bunch of like empty buildings and stuff like that. We're, I think government in this sense is part of the solution, but alone, we are not the solution.
Yeah, yeah. Because, I mean, I know that, I, I think I go more to downtown central to, than Callejico because of, because of I I think I go more to downtown central to than Callexico because of because of Mashka and. Yeah, and go visit them a lot and not a lot, but like, you know, go have a couple beers or I've even recorded the the podcast here.
Oh, cool.
So, um, yeah, I think that. Callexico needs to look into that too, uh, so having like maybe like a restaurant or brewery or.
Sure.
I think I think uh food and and and, you know, bars attract people. And and I think we need to focus a little bit because I was talking to John and and Vic, Vicario about, I mean, they're. Callexico boys, they they grew up here, so they know a lot of the past. So they they used to tell me that um there was like steakhouse down downtown Callexico. I'm like, really? Like, yeah. I was like, then when I grew up, there was really hardly any local restaurants downtown. It's like, oh, I think, um. I can't remember the story they told me, but I feel that um a lot of people, a lot of young people that are running for council kind of like shine off the. The old Callexico, they they try to think that, you know, they want to have control over the city, but. I feel that they know a lot, they know what worked back then that might be able to work now. So, I don't know, I wasn't, I wasn't that same vote. Um, for a long time, growing up, I grew up in the projects, so I kind of like.
Yeah.
Thought, you know. I I when I grew up, I thought I was part of Callexico, but part of the low income apartments, Callexico, you know, I wasn't part of the other. But I think that, um, it was because we never really wanted to be part of that Callexico, it was just us. But now, growing up and talking to John, talking to Vic, I kind of, you know, they they love the city. Um, and they they want the best for it. So I feel that it's not um smart to kind of shine off the.
No, no, not at all. I mean, because uh, and this goes for everyone. It's not so much just Callexico and and my comments are not just. Based on what you said, but what I've learned in my community is. I gain nothing by shining off what once was, which is why I I said that in our downtown, it it's very nostalgic. For a lot of people, either my age and older, because we remember what it felt like to be there when we were younger and there's value in that. And it may not be exactly that I'm I envision them saying, put it exactly like how it used to be. But what they're trying to say is make it feel, make it useful, make it uh. A place, a communal place like it used to, whatever, however it has to exist today so that it works. But make it so that I can have those memories like I did when I was a kid. I wanna be able to have that same space so that my kids can come here and enjoy, right? And so. At least for me, I'll say that I I do need to exist in a space where I am acknowledging the past. But making decisions for the future so that I could still try to hopefully recreate some of those positive moments that existed in the past. But in a new way, so that the next generation can have that same attachment to it.
Yeah, like make make their own memories and and yeah, yeah. Um, I think I'm gonna use Gil's question now. Where he said about, uh, what are some, what are some of the decisions you've made in your term this, your last term, the one you're in right now? That you, looking back, would probably make a different choice, different decision.
Sign ordinances, the sign ordinance in El Centro, because there is a a lot of unintended consequences in that sign ordinance that I. I look back and I think, oh, I hadn't really thought of political signs versus uh non-commercial signs, uh temporary stuff. So. That one a hundred percent, I think that's just been weighing on my mind this whole year. Uh, because we, you know, the, that ordinance was passed in twenty twenty, we were in the pandemic, you really didn't see it. Of the the full effect. This year, however, I think that ordinance that we passed in twenty twenty. Really got exercised and really got challenged.
And what's, can you elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, so it was, um, uh. We were trying to address clutter of of signs in general, right? Like. Yard signs and just promotional signs, graduation signs, I support this group sign, right? Just all sorts of signs. That after a while can can really clutter an area. And so we started limiting those down to only two. But when the time came and it finally got to like the primary earlier this year, we started noticing how unfair. It was and how limiting it was for any candidate to have a fair shot at promoting themselves, right? So it gave an advantage to people with more money, it gave them an advantage to people who knew more people. And so it wasn't an equal playing field, and that wasn't my intent to create advantage and disadvantage, right? Depending who you are. So that's that's certainly one that kind of goes in it. Some other things were related to COVID. I think some might some, the the world will never know. All of the conversations and the interactions that we had due to COVID uh behind closed doors in council. Uh, I'm glad the ways some things turned out, uh, and and I think that some things turned out. A lot later than they should have, but at the end of the day, we did our best, right? But internally, I think. There was a lot of disagreements between some members about how COVID, I mean, first of all, whether COVID was even. Something we should be paying attention to and and whether or not COVID was something that we needed to react to. And I I remember. We were voting on on closing down the aquatic center. And I think it was like on a Tuesday where we were voting, I was the only one. Who voted to close it. All four of my colleagues said, no. That was on a Tuesday. By Thursday or Friday, we got an email from the city manager saying, based on the amount of. Cases and the hospitalizations and because of the state, we have to shut down the aquatic center. And I just thought, what did I just say? What did I just say? But it's it was because, you know, I think that a lot of uh folks just didn't, didn't know how serious to take it. And and uh. I remember, what was it? Uh. I I was supposed to be a judge for a comedy show, um, put on, I think by What's Up With You Productions, right? With Molina. And. Last minute, I said, I I can't go. You know, I I'm so sorry, it sends the wrong message. I'm a council member. How does it look that I'm I'm gonna be telling people soon to stay home and there I am going out? That's not right, right? So I I need to practice what I preach and I need to stay home. So I stay home, he's like, ah, come on, man, you know, ah, no pasa nada, like that whole thing, right? All my friends were just kind of saying stuff. Months later, like, we shut down, the whole world starts realizing what's going on, at least here in the community, everyone's like, oh, so. We're on a Zoom and one of my friends was like, can I tell you something, Tomas? I was like, hey, what's up, bro? And he says. We made fun of you hard that night. He says, we, we were clowning you like, ay, el Tomas, que ay, si, este que el otro. And and he says, but you knew, huh? You knew that this was coming? I was like, yeah, I did. I mean. Thankfully, because of my day job, I get to work for the United States House of Representatives in my day job. We knew, we knew how hard this was gonna hit and and we were prepping. When you have an institution like Congress shifting, telling us stay home. Until further notice and all that stuff, you know, it's real, right? And and so I told him, yeah, I I did know it was coming. They kind of prepped this internally, like what was gonna happen and this and that. And I just said, but here's the sad part. None of you would have ever believed me. None of you would have taken me seriously for what I would have said. You would have thought I was crazy. And. What's funny is that like that concept, I teach in at I B C. And it's uh it's political theory, it's the allegory of the cave. It's, you know, there's there's a, there's a whole theory in politics, again. Going back, education and experience is important. And so like, you know, in education, there's this allegory and and they talk about, you know. There's three people that are chained up in a cave, they've never been outside, they've never really seen sunlight and and all they see is images, shadows. Uh, on the wall based on a fire that's behind them, right? They've never been able to look backwards, so they don't know what fire looks like. They just see these images. And to them, that's reality. That's reality because that's all they've seen, that's all they know. And so finally, one day, one of those gets unchained. And he gets to climb out the cave and he gets to see the sun, he gets to see flowers, he gets to see. A lake, birds, animals, everything. And he's just so amazed by everything he gets to see. He runs back. And he tries to tell the ones in the cave what he saw and they don't believe it. They think he's crazy, right? And when my friend was telling me, he's like, you knew, huh? And I said, yeah, but how would I explain that? How would I even begin? To tell you what I know without you thinking that I'm crazy and it reverts back to the allegory of the cave.
Yeah, it's. Exactly. And um, going back to, you know, you making that decision, do you feel that uh elected officials should be ha- held at a higher. Standard than, you know, e- everyday people? When it comes to, you know.
My my gut is to say yes, hands down automatically, because I think that we know, you know. We ask for these positions, we ask for these spaces, and so we should. But I wanna put like a little asterisk on that. And that is to to say, yes, you can hold us to a higher standard, but also remember that we're human. And that we're, we are not perfect. So, you know, I I would say to to my current constituents and to hopefully, you know, the voters that that plan to vote for me. Yes, ho- hold me to a higher standard, but that doesn't mean I'm perfect and know that I'm still human and that I still hurt, I still laugh, I still cry, I still. You know, feel happy and sad, you know, like everyone else, right? So it's just, there there are those moments too.
And you also mentioned, um, you know, with the sign ordinance, you know, people you know, popularity. Um, do you think that people who vote nowadays, especially in in the valley, do they vote, um. Because they know the candidate or they really do look into their policies, the way they they campaigned, the, you know, what, why they wanna run? Or is it more of a like kind of A S B thing where it's like, oh, you're popular, we're gonna.
I think it's both. I think it's both. I think there's, there's a type of voter. That actually does their homework and they look into it. And then there's some voters that either they don't want to or they don't have time. And so they go off of their memory, they go off of who's more popular, who have my friends talked about. What was that last commercial I saw on Facebook or Instagram? You know, what name is recognizable as I look at my ballot? So I think there's both. But I will say that, um, you know, give credit to my students at I B C when I when I've taught in the past. I've always said that there are two types of voters. There's the voter that will look at a candidate and say, wow. They're better than me, they're more prepared, they're more polished. I I would aspire to be like that person. I want to vote for that person, right? They have to look up to you. And then there's the type of voter that would look at a candidate and say. Oh, that candidate reminds me of me, they're just like me, I I could grab a beer with that candidate. I wanna vote for that person. No one really says, looks at someone down and goes, oh, yeah, that candidate is less prepared than me. I'm gonna vote for that. Like, no one does that, but. So I asked my students, are you A or are you B? Right? Are you the first voter or are you the second? Most of them didn't raise their hand. I said, no, 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 what's going on, guys? Like, it's one or the other, what is it? And one of my students challenged me and he said. Well, I think it's a little bit of both, right? Like, I want, I want the candidate to be better prepared than me, better educated. Better experienced, right? But I want them to hold the same values as me and the same morals and ethics as me. So there's a bit of both, right? So he created now what I will teach, a third type of candidate, which is all of the above, right? Which is, uh, you know, they they may see how we conduct ourselves, they may see how we're treating others, they may see. You know, when the cameras turn off and all that. Are you the type of person that is like helping the old lady cross the street? If you see somebody outside, you know, the mailman delivering or the mail person delivering the mail, are you inclined to offer them water? Who are you, right? Who are you when no one's looking? And and uh, are you really here to help or are you just here because you like the title and that kind of stuff? So I think that there's different voters and and unfortunately, you know, for the people who work a lot. They're probably not gonna look us up, right? But and that's okay, but that's why, um, you know, word of mouth, we're still in that age where. You know. La comadre, oye, comadre, que que piensas de del fulano de tal, fulano de tal, like, that matters a lot here too.
And I think that during the pandemic, um, a lot of when kids came back from school because they were shutting down.
Oh, yeah.
And then we were in the twenty twenty election. I think that. Them coming back kind of swayed a lot of votes in terms of them talking to their parents like. Oh, you should vote for this person because so and so have, you know, education, kids that came back that were a little bit. More educated than their parents kind of came back in like.
And it's by design, right? I mean, our parents sacrificed, worked hard and everything so that their kids could go to college. Not every parent had that opportunity. And so. Uh, I would imagine that the parents now, les van a ser caso, right? They're gonna listen to their kids because. They may have learned something, they may have done, you know, been exposed to something else and brought home new ideas.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think it brought a big change in terms of, you know, that election, the twenty twenty election, especially in Callexico, I feel. It was a a change, there was a change that, um. That happened because of that, um, now is it something that two years later is something that they're happy with? You know, we'll see in 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 November, but um, yeah, I think that, uh. Kids talking to their parents, kids talking, I think, uh, I think me and my family, me and my kids do talk about. Politics a little bit, and I think it's, it's something that needs to be done more nowadays, because. Like you said, if your parents work a lot and they don't have a chance to look at the news, read an article, read this and that. Um, if you're doing it, it's good to share with with your parents.
No, absolutely. I I've uh, I've been fortunate enough to go to career days at at the schools, the elementary schools and. And El Centro and and as I mentioned before, I I teach at I B C, political science. And the first day, I play a game with with my students at I B C, but when I talk about politics. I I ask the audience, you know, who here sees themselves running for office in the future? And some some will raise their hands, some will. And the whole thing is. You have to know who you are, right? I always ask them, if if I were to give you a lightsaber or. A sword, right? Something, how would you use it, right? And somebody will say, oh, also, you know, to to get back at the bullies he used to do. That's like, okay, or like. To show it off and to, you know, this or that. And then I try to shift it, right? That sword is supposed to represent power, the power that. Council members, assembly members, senators, members of Congress supervisors, like we have, right? Because we're given it by the people. And the question is, depending on who you are as a person and what you stand for will determine how you use that sword. You could use it to show it off, you could use it to pay back. People who did stuff to you, you could use it to intimidate, to bully, you could use it for all sorts of things, or you could use it to defend. And you could use it to save people, you could use it for to hunt, to survive, you could use it for all sorts of things. And so the same way. This position of power, um, as little or as big as it is, you have, what do you stand for? You know, who are you as a person? Do you, you know, do you, are you going to use this power to defend, to assist? To protect, or are you gonna use it to bully and intimidate and to, you know, to gain, right? And so. I really do think that as as the youth begin to and as you're talking to your kids and and as others are are kind of figuring this out. If you really do want to jump into something like this in the future, you gotta know what you stand for, how you would use it.
Hmm, yeah, and and I think something that I I like when I do talk to my my sons and my nie- my niece and my nephews. About politics, there's, I like when they don't agree with me on something and they kind of like tell me why. And you know, it's like, okay, like, I'm, do I agree with you on this, but not on this? Um, I think it's a healthy, you know. Thing to do, you know, a- a- and 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 it's not, I try not to argue.
Sure.
Because I want them to make their own decisions. They don't, I don't want them to think to. To think that I'm kind of brainwashing them to think the way I think, you know, you make your own decisions, but share with me why and, you know, maybe you'll. Change my mind. And and I think that's a, it's a good, good way to talk to your kids and 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 kind of learn from them too. Cause they they live in in different world than we did.
I I went through this earlier today. I was on the phone with uh my uh mayor pro tem, Martha Cardenas Singh. You know, we're on the phone and she was sharing with me this thought and she said, you know, so and so mentioned X, Y, and Z. And there's, there's a big difference, like having to separate the message from the messenger. Right? And so a lot of times I'll have a maybe a a kid or a student, uh, you know, whomever, right? Give me an idea. And. It's very easy to quickly just kind of dismiss it because of who the messenger is, right? Versus honing in on the message, like, take away who's telling it to you. You may or may not like the person, you may or may not respect the person. Is that that's not the point, but now look at, is what they're telling you valuable? Is there a value in in that? And is it going, are you gonna allow it to challenge you? To refine your mind point? Maybe, maybe there's a piece, like you said, there's a piece of it that you agree with and like, how do I now fit that into what I believe? To make what I believe stronger, right? And again, this goes back to uh political science, it's called the um, the marketplace of ideas. And the concept is that like by discussion, by communicating with others, by allowing to share ideas with one another. Does your idea become better? Because you've now been exposed to other ideas that you wouldn't have otherwise been exposed to. And then you also get to contribute. To making someone else's idea stronger because now you're weighing in on it. So, again, education and experience.
Yeah, and that's something that I've learned, you know, talking to people, especially with when it comes to election season. I I try to learn a little bit from everybody that I talk to. Um, and there's things that, um, some some of the, some of the people that I. That I'm friends with that are running for like for, you know, uh, public office. Um, they'll tell me something and then the other candidate that I might not be friends with, they tell me something and I kind of agree a little bit more with them than I do with them, but. It's hard like to tell. But it's hard like to tell my friends that I do because, I don't know, I try to be a little bit um passive when it comes to all this because it's, you know, you know, it's such a small community that um, I don't wanna
Rub people the wrong way?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and you know, I um I'll share an example that's very similar to what you're describing, and that is um, so I'm, I'm considered a little bit more progressive. I I identify as a Democrat, right? Doesn't mean I I agree with a hundred percent of the things, right? That that the party believes in, but most of them. But I've never felt more like a Republican than being in a room full of Bernie Sanders supporters. Cuz I remember thinking like, wait a minute, I don't, I don't know if I agree with that. And they'd be like, almost like, why are, why, how are you in this room? Why, why are you here, kinda thing? And I, and one of the, there was two points, I remember. Uh, they wanted to adopt this policy or this white paper that said two points that I just don't agree with, and that is uh, uh, defund the police and abolish ICE. And I just thought, ah, I don't, I don't agree with that. And I said, defund the police, I'm like, I'm a council member. Um, I'm sorry, but I'm actually elected and I could tell you right now that, you know, our police serve an extremely good purpose, right? And you're taking all of these negative instances here and there and all that kinda stuff, and you're now trying to apply it to my police department, which doesn't fit. I said, so I I would, I mean, if if what you're saying is our police departments shouldn't have military style equipment or shouldn't have um weapons of war and that kinda stuff, then like, then say that. Right? Say exactly what you mean, don't, don't make it broad and vague and like these like talking points. And I said, um, abolish ICE, I just thought, look, I'm not for it, it was, well, Bernie Sanders said to abolish, I'm like, well, good for the Senator of Vermont. But I said, I live fifteen miles from the border. And ICE is not just about immigration, ICE is about arms dealings, about human trafficking. It's about um drug trafficking, sex trafficking and immigration, right? There's so much more to it. So if you abolish ICE, I'm like, let's say you guys accomplish that. The drugs, the human trafficking, the arms trafficking, it's gonna hit my community before it ever hits yours. Who's gonna address that here in in Southern California and Imperial County? Like, not you guys, I said, so no. But if what you're saying is you would like for ICE to prioritize its immigration enforcement to violent offenders and to not prioritize non-violent offenders, then say that.
Yeah.
And I think that that at the end of the day, at at the core of everything is what most people who say abolish ICE is all about. Um, so again, those are like not something that like people are gonna like in my, in my party for me to say, but I think that's, that's just how I feel.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, it's, cuz because this, this two-party thing is kinda, kinda hard because it's become too uh radical, whereas like, these are what our beliefs, and if you don't believe all of them, then you're, you know.
And I don't like that either, like, I don't like these litmus tests of of like, no, 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 you don't get to say that and still be part of this crew. If you're gonna be saying that, you go over there, like, I remember having somebody from the, so I used to be really involved in the Catholic Church. I used to be a Eucharistic minister at Our Lady of Abalopen in El Centro. I still am, right? I just haven't signed up to to do it. But I was told by one of like the main people that were there, it's, you cannot be a Catholic and be pro-choice. And I just thought, good to meet you, like, I exist in those spaces, right? And so how can you tell me I can't exist like this, right? Uh, which again, I don't agree with that, you can't give me this, you can't be this and that, you can't be a Democrat and believe this. Or you can't be a Republican and believe this, it's just, I I I think most of us are now blends of so many things.
Yeah, I think uh, you know, our core beliefs, like as Hispanics, you know, like uh, religion and a lot of other, these things, other things that we, as Hispanics believe. You know, a lot of, a lot of our parents were Republicans in in a long time ago because you know, that was the core beliefs of the Republicans, but then, you know, a lot of things cha- have changed since then. Um, and I think younger generations are, you know, being more Republican or um what what party is, or Bernie Sanders, what what is?
Oh, he's an independent.
Independent, so.
Technically, but he caucuses with Democrats, so yeah.
So yeah, that, see, see, Bernie does that, like where he's like kinda both, in both.
He can exist like, yeah, yeah, exactly.
So it's like, why do you believe, why do you support somebody that's in both and yet you don't, you don't want people to be, you know?
Both, it's either one or the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I find the more that I talk to people, people don't exist as just this one thing, this one space. People are blends in all sorts of ways, and so I, I feel like as though you know, we all have different ideas, right? It's, we're not gonna just exist in in one space or another, so it's just about being open, no judgments.
Hmm.
Teach their own and let's just accept each other.
Yeah, exactly.
As long as we're not hurting each other.
So we're almost at an hour and we kinda like started talking about, you know, other politics things, not, not your campaign. But any closing thoughts that, you know, I didn't, we didn't talk about, that I didn't ask you?
No, sure, I, so, I've been very proud, very humbled, very honored to have served four years in El Centro City Council. And I have a lot of vision, a lot of projects, a lot of changes that I would like to continue and see through. And make sure that we are moving forward and that we are not moving backward. And so I humbly ask for the residents of El Centro to trust me one more time with four years in making decisions in the upcoming four years and to, to consider me for their vote uh this November.
All right, well, thank you for coming on, thank you, thank you for coming down to Callexico, um, and um, nothing but luck on your campaign.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else that's running for a city, Central City Council that wants to be on, you know, just hit me up through Facebook or Instagram or email me at capasacalexico@gmail.com. And I'll make a space for you so you can come down and and, you know, promote your campaign. But I wanna thank everybody for, again, for listening or watching, and we'll see you guys in the next one. Peace.